And we also want to talk to you about a modification to the construction timeline, and why we think it's prudent to do that modification. So with that, I'll have Mr. Hanna come up and just show you the overview of the progress.
So here we're looking at the gym. You can see they're placing the concrete for the new floor. The floor has been placed, and they're finishing it right now. Of course, we got a good look at it. It's finished. It's been placed, and they're starting to install some of the mechanical systems there. They've been able to get to the outside now. We've got some warm weather. They're completing the soffits. Here, you can see the inside is pretty well done. The concrete's been placed. These are the storage rooms. You can see the acoustic block that's been put in place. This area right here was an opening that was left during the construction to get the concrete trucks and some of the other heavy stuff in. Now it's closed up. Moving on to some of the exterior improvements. This is your fitness, your proposed fitness room. They're putting the flashing in, getting ready for the new roofing that we're all smelling tonight. This is the fitness room ceiling. You can see the new mechanical systems have been put in, new lights, getting ready for paint. Paint's been in place, and in fact, when we took a walk through there now, it's pretty well finished, getting ready for some of the finished flooring. The toilet rooms, which are going to service your new gymnasium, are complete. The partitions are in, the fixtures are in, the water's on. That's ready to go. Here's some of the athletic team room progress. Now, this is the music wing. You can see they're putting the new display cases that are going to hold all the awards. Your music department has one. This is the gym entrance floor. So coming off of that West parking lot, everybody entering the gymnasium is going to come through this entrance. So we're walking in. This is going to be a Tarazo floor. If you make a left, you go into the fitness room. If you make a right, you go into the gymnasium. And then down where this plastic is, is a corridor that goes back to the toilet rooms we were looking at. And this floor right here is going to house a graphic that your administration's putting together. So it's really going to be a while to walk into that entrance floor. Going down the music wing corridor, you can see some of the finishes are in there. These are the display cases they were putting on, putting up. Now, this is your instrumental music room. It's been painted. These are clouds that are going to go in, in that music room. So this will be like an acoustical finish ceiling, and then you'll see some of the open ceiling through there. It's really going to be a nice effect. They started putting the instrument storage in this area. Now, we're looking at the cafeteria. The cafeteria foundations have started. Work has really started back up on that. They're replacing the concrete floor for the cafeteria tomorrow. Here's more foundations. Here, they got the foundation walls going on, and the roof drains in place. Roofing again has started up since the snow's gone, and we can do that. It's been a rough winter. Mr. Ziegler hasn't been there, dealing with that roof. So you can see that progress. Now, looking at the coral rooms, you can see the finishes are going in, and these coral rooms are done now. These were the art rooms. And as a matter of fact, your students use these for the play this weekend. So that's done, and this coral room's done. So that's pretty much that. And Ms. Fiola told you, we proposed, the contractors came and wanted to propose a switch in some of the phasing. And really, it's a no time, no cost change. It's just reworking some things that are going to be a win-win for both Potts Grove and the summer schedule. One of the changes is this athletic area. They were supposed to get into that existing gym at the end of the summer. Well, when we were going through some of the other facings, it was suggested that we leave that there, because the wrestling team really doesn't have any place to go. They've been laying out the mats in the cafeteria, and it's been a difficult time for Mr. Lorenzo, hasn't it, for your wrestling team? And they really needed those locker rooms. So that's going to be postponed till March, and they'll get it done by the time they were supposed to get it done that summer. So they would have tied that up for a whole year, and there was no need to do that. This area here, which is your cafeteria, your serving area, as I showed the board members that took the walkthrough with us, there is a significant amount of welding that needs to be done in there to reinforce the roof because of the addition. And that is going to take a lot of time, and it would really put a kink in getting this ready for students to come back in September. Now, that welding was part of the contract, but the extent of it and the man-hours to get it done was really unexpected. They had done some of that back in this area, and it was very problematic. So we worked out with the cafeteria staff and your administration to get the contractors in there in the middle of May, May 15th, to do that welding. And then the contractors go in there, do their work, and get it all together. Even though this cafeteria was delayed, that'll be ready as well. The other real major change is your administration area. It was decided that it would be better to keep them in there for this year, keep that out of the phasing this year, kind of have the contractors focus on getting these classrooms done, getting this area done in the cafeteria, and then working all of this together and getting them done at the same time, so that we're not really disrupting your administration and your whole school during that summer. So that seemed like to be a better plan. And that's going to be a no-cost, no-time extension change. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, I didn't understand. I wasn't clear on what you were saying about the administration area. That's different.
It's the high school office, the current office. That was supposed to be in this summer, but it was going to be that plus the library, plus the cafeteria, plus those two wings. And what we decided to do is to hold off on doing that, because if, God forbid, we didn't have that completed, that would really be a nuisance to try to open school without an efficiently running office. And we're starting construction on the guidance area, which is just outside of the windows out here, the wall area. And that's not going to be completed until next year. So in essence, the guidance and the high school offices will all be completed simultaneously. The guidance counselors can then be moved into their new area. The administrative area will then all be completed together.
Thank you, and how I understand.
Could you just really quick, give us a real quick synopsis of what areas are going to be turned, done, and turned over to us when?
Okay.
Just kind of timeline.
This area, and the team rooms, and the instrumental music will be first, second week of April. The gym for the start of school. This green area here, this dark area here, the red areas, will start school this year. If you look, if you look on here, the plans I'm giving you, you know, I have a few more in the car. I quickly grabbed my car and ran over here. Everybody doesn't get on my damn foot. But the dates on there, when they get turned over to you, are on there. This gray area here starts this year, and we turn it over to you next year. And this one is, let me get that big, what is that thing?
Next summer.
Next summer. That's next summer. As well as the science area is next summer.
Okay, so the only question I have has to do with the cafeteria and the start in May, and the disruption to the students. I read something about how that's going to work. I'd like to hear that described for one and for two. Just playing devil's advocate, has anybody taken the pulse of the students about this change? Because it's a pretty major disruption for, what, about a three-week period, a month?
Well, first of all, we won't have all the students the entire time, because the seniors are, in essence, on their senior trip, and then they're done a little bit early. We haven't talked with the students per se, because we don't really feel like we have another option in the matter, because we felt, after discussing this as a team, that having a disruption in the spring is far better than having a disruption in the fall to try to start school. So that was the, you know, kind of the weighing of the decision. We work with the, Dave worked with the health department. We work with the food service department. We work with our design team in putting together what that flow would look like. And we're in essence moving everything to the gymnasium, including the serving lines. There's only going to be a slight modification to what we're able to serve. We basically went over that, was that yesterday morning, Dave? And they still have the same foods that they had before. We're able to get almost everything moved over there. We're just working with the electricians now to see, to make sure we have the appropriate electrical outlets, and we were going through all of that Tuesday morning. The students will enter and exit probably right outside the auditorium, into the gymnasium, and out, so it's really not an inconvenience to them. There's restrooms right next to the gym auditorium area. And the food will be, the disruption or the inconvenience is really the food service, because they're going to be hauling the food down and serving it. So that's on their end, more than on the kids. They'll just come in, get in their regular serving lines. They have, we have it all designed and laid out as if it were in, they actually have more space open in one big area, instead of having, right now, where they're in an annex in another area.
And the loss of the gym during that time, is that going to be a problem?
Well, we work, we work with the athletic department and the phys ed department, and they're, we're pretty comfortable with that. Plus, we're going to have the new fitness area turned back over, and if you would have seen that today, you'd see how large it is. We're not going to put the weight equipment back in first, so in essence, you can use that as a facility to do a lot of things.
Just to kind of comment on yours. I did ask my daughter, because she's at the high school, she's a junior, what she thought of this, and she was like, "Yeah, nobody's going to care as long as they can still eat." And at the end of the school year, there are a lot of trips and a lot of special meetings and things like that anyway, so a lot of kids are not in their lunch whenever they, you know, are in their lunch. They have finals in there, when you're not always there for finals, you don't always eat lunch if you don't have a final that day. So she said the last couple weeks of school, everybody's everywhere anyway, and as long as they get to eat, they don't care.
Okay, well, we have a motion on for the approval of the presentation when we get to the action items, so we'll just move on to the next, the next item for discussion, which is records retention. And I know we spoke about this at the last meeting, but I did want you to know that I, we went back and did some homework on it and took another look at it. And in your packet this past week, I sent you a detailed report. I spent the better part of a day touring all of the spaces and talking to each different secretary that's responsible for records. And just to remind the board, we have a records retention policy, and under that policy, there's administrative regulations that are written that articulate which files have to be kept and for how long. And about a year or so ago, we started working on modifying that, and Michelle McCluckey was actually, took that on as a project. And we had it nearly completed, or completed to what we thought was pretty good. But that's when we were starting to look at the issue that we have, which is over the course of time, over many, many years, records weren't, there was no records retention program, protocols, policies, or anything like that. And that's why we have what we have. So she was nearing the end of getting this records retention guidelines, so to speak, on paper, and that was just prior to when she left. So in the fall, when we started talking about this again, we knew we needed to just sure up whether or not, you know, we were comfortable with the guidelines. So right now, I spent it, the other day, looking through it again, and I sent it to our solicitor for final review, because we're pretty sure that what we have on the piece of paper not only matches school code, but it's also in line with what we feel we can live with in terms of when policies, or when records are requested, so that we make sure that we hold on to them long enough, so that, you know, they're useful to us, and if they're not useful to us, and we don't need to hold on to them, then we would do the purging. So that being said, I went and looked first at the high school, and I think there are 38, I put in my report, 38 filing cabinets. They're in three places over there. There's some filing, well, actually, they're in four places. Some filing cabinets are in the vault that's in the office area. That is going to be no longer accessible after, when they start the construction in there. But if we delay, then those six or seven cabinets are okay for right now. There's filing cabinets in the guidance suite. Then there are two other very large spaces with lots of filing cabinets, a lion's share of the filing cabinets. One is in the 100s hallway, one is in the 400s hallway. Those will no longer be in existence once we start the construction, and they're not slated to be put back the way they are. We're using that space in a different way to make classrooms larger, and it was redesigned. So we have to find a place for that. What our immediate need is, and what I articulated in this report that I gave you, is that we'd like to purge those documents to the extent possible. In other words, we need to go back, all the way back to the 1950s and before, using our records retention guidelines, and we need to purge what is no longer necessary to retain. That should shrink our need for storage quite a bit. But it's quite an undertaking, because as I said, over years past, they didn't have such a thing. So that's our immediate need, and that's why I have a motion on the board agenda to ask your approval for the purging piece, so that we can start with that problem. Thinking proactively and preparing ourselves for next year, we have an even, probably an even bigger issue to look at, that being all of the student special education records are here in the district office. In addition to that, we have all of our HR records, our business records, which is accounts payable, payroll, sorry. We have all the board, different board documents. There's many, many documents, many of which are used. They can't be, most of those records can't be off-site storage. They have to be accessible. The ones at the high school, the guidance secretary told me that she's in there at least four times, you know, a week, a day sometimes on a given period, looking for records. So they have to have those accessible in some way, or be able to access them rather easily. Mrs. Barilla, the HR secretary, same thing. Now we have, with the new Act 168, is that what it is? I can't keep track of the numbers. You know, when someone applies for a position, they have to go back to the former employers and get the paper filled out that said that they didn't have any, anything on their records. So she's back in our records, looking through. Somebody could have worked for us 15 years ago, and she's back there looking at their records to ensure that she can complete the document that's required for it to be hired somewhere else now. So those are the kind of issues that I'm trying to show. And I guess the immediate need for us is to get the records purged at the high school, so that we can move them and store them somewhere for the summer while this renovation takes place. And in addition to that, we'll have to store them for all of next year, because those spaces, like I said, aren't going to be there. When the new office area at the high school is renovated, there is a space for record storage. And what I've asked the architect to do is to spec out what type of filing storage we could actually fit in that space, and then how many linear files can be housed in that space. And I think that you will find that we have space to house the lion's share of the files if we get files purged. And that will solve our need for the time being, but that's just, that's just one piece of it. But then at the district office, we have to do something, because next year, when they do the renovation here, and the board members that got to see that can see that it's the MDF room, all of the equipment's there, we have paper on the floor, there's, we're overflowing in boxes and boxes of files. We have boxes piled up in the back on the business office. We have boxes on the floor in the conference room, where we have parents coming in for parent meetings. I mean, it's just not conducive to working efficiently and productively. So that's probably our second thing, is first purge high school, second purge district office in preparation for that renovation. At the same time, look for different filing systems. If it's going to be paper, paper. We'll also entertain the electronic files and bring the recommendations back, as you had advised. But the immediate need is to get the files purged.
In the high school, what records are in the rooms that need to be moved specifically? Are they, are they not special ed records? Because when you came to us last time, you said that we needed to deal with special ed records. And now it sounds like it's a more general set of records.
Well, I don't remember specifically saying special ed, but if I did, then I just didn't understand it. But I can tell you, I understand it now, because I spent a whole day. The files that are over at the high school are all general student files. The special education files are kept at the district office, but the high school is all general student files, going from current day all the way back to, Bill said we had some from the 1930s. We actually have some that the guidance secretary showed me, they're on microfiche, that we don't even have a machine to actually read the microfiche anymore.
Wow. Okay. Well, now, the 100-year retention policy is basic student information, correct?
Right. That's the, that's what's required by school code, and I summarized it here on that report that I gave you.
Right. Isn't the 100-year requirement for at least current students maintained in our power school system? I mean, when I was looking here, name, address, parent guardian, birth date, transcript, academic work completed, level of achievement, general attendance. Don't we maintain that electronically already?
Michael, do you want to speak to that?
As far back as the adoption of Power School. So yes, we have that back to 1909, 89, until we had one Power School's adoption.
So are we keeping hard copy files in addition to this? Are we adding to the problem with student records?
I would say we probably do have hard copy files in addition to this, because that's just what school districts have always had, files.
Well, again, I'm just trying to mentally understand the scope of the problem. For example, the requests that the secretary, the secretaries are getting in the high school, understand that occasionally, they go back very far in time, but I have to imagine that that's fairly rare.
Well, I wrote in here what she, what she told me. She said, "Many requests go back 10 to 15 years." This was her words. And that, you know, she's gotten requests all the way back to the 60s.
And obviously, we can't satisfy those requests via the electronic system before 2009, but with each successive year, the problem lessens, because we're going to keep our student data electronically for the foreseeable future. So I guess my question is, couldn't we move these files to the unutilized space at West Potts Grove for the time being, at no cost to the district?
No, because she needs to be able to get in the files.
Well, couldn't somebody at West get in the files when, when?
They, they don't know what they're looking for. We're talking about the guidance secretary. She's the one that goes in, and when someone makes a request, she puts the things together. She said sometimes that the file, the older files, what used to happen is they would have a summary of the year, so to speak, on a folder, like a manila folder, and in the one corner, it has their grades, and they're written there, and then the attendance is in another piece. And sometimes, she said, she actually has to create a transcript of sorts. So she makes it up based on the information that's there, because one doesn't really exist. So she, she knows what she's looking for and what she has to do, and that's how she creates these things, and she's responsible for them. I can't, you know, I can't see sending these files over for West Potts Grove. And plus, Rick, if you saw the files, you'd see that they're a mess, and they need to be gone through. You know, some of them are in boxes that are split open and laying on top of the filing cabinet, so that's why I wanted you to kind of see the problem.
Well, as I said, I didn't, I don't really have a trouble imagining a messy file room that's overflowing. I've lived it. So, and I've lived the space problem as well, you know, and you never have enough space.
I think the space problem is going to be okay once we get the purging done. We just want to get the purging done, so we can...
So the records go back to what year?
All the way back. I know, Bill said 1930. Let me look at my...
Yes, I think the hard copies go back to the 50s, and then after that, we go back to the 30s with microfiche.
So again, I'm going to ask the same question, even though you told me no. If we took the files from the 1930s all the way up to, say, the year 2000, or, okay, 1995, pick your year, how, what percentage of the mess do we clean up when, when we know that it's extremely rare that we need to access this information? And the microfiche, we never have to access, because we can't, right?
Right.
I mean, we're going to throw that out, right? Because it's...
We can't throw it out. Sometimes what she does is she's actually giving them copies of it, and then they have to go blow it up somewhere.
So we're keeping this unusable format of data fine? So I guess my question is, what percentage of the 38 file cabinets do we take care of by going through those years that I'm talking about, and what's left over? Because I think what I might be okay with is shipping all that old stuff into a storage, hopefully on our premises, so we don't have to pay for it, and then, and then paying to cull out the rest of the files, because they're more frequently needed. And that would also give, put us in much better shape for when the construction is done. I just don't really see much use in going through files from the 1930s and 40s and 50s and 60s, all the way up to the 90s. Even if people ask for it, it's got to be once in a blue moon.
Well, when, the way I see it here on the, on the sheet she gave me, she said they require one new filing cabinet per year, and there's actually files back to 1960 that are in filing cabinets. And there's 10 from 1960 to 1979. So if you're suggesting that we don't purge those 10, I mean, that, you know, maybe we can not purge those 10. Or there's 1980 to 1989, there's seven. Then there's one filing cabinet, pretty much for every year thereafter, from 1990 to 2014.
So that's more, about half, by my quick math. Actually, a little more than half.
Right.
So I guess what I'm saying is, why bother spending any time other than physically moving those files? It just seems like a complete waste of time to me.
Well, I guess we don't have to, but it's, you have to keep them, so we're going to need a space to put them, and they have to be under lock and key, and somebody has to be accountable for them.
So I did go on the tour, and it's not just file cabinets. I don't think it's going to be possible for somebody to just put a roly cart underneath a file cabinet and just roll it onto a truck and roll it over to West. That room back there is a mess. It's just boxes falling apart, stuff falling out of it. The ones just down in the 400 wing, it's, is that where we were across from the art room? There's, I mean, the drawers were hanging out. The files look like some of them were that thick, when we only need one page, you know? But the file cabinets look like they're, they look like they're older than the files. So, I mean, I can't even imagine a 50-year-old filing cabinet that it's going to get onto a hand truck without everything. But it's not just the filing cabinets. I think if we could strap close the filing cabinets and take them over to West and stick them in a room, that would be one thing. But there are boxes everywhere. There are, I mean, that is a mess. It is just, it's really, it's a hot mess. And it's not the current administration's fault. They've just kind of been, there's no room to put anything, you know? I'm a, I'm a purger, I'm a thrower-outer. At the end of every year, I throw stuff out, and, you know, definitely going forward, I think going to electronic records is the way to do it. Obviously, according to the law, we have to keep at least some of these records, but if your file is this thick and you only need one page, why are we going to, you know, pay to haul all of this stuff someplace else? And then, as we grow, we're going to need that. Eventually, we're going to have to address this issue, you know? So rather than moving the stuff around, let's just address the issue. It seems to me that this year would be a good year to do it, because number one, we have the, you know, we need to move them anyway. They have to go somewhere. I would rather pay to get rid of stuff than pay to store it somewhere and keep stuff, because then we're going to have to pay for it year after year after year. because then we're going to have to pay for it year after year after year into infinity. And this year, it seems like, and Mr. Nestor can probably tell us about this, we're getting some money back from the Ringing Rocks renovation, from that where we're putting the posts on, and we're getting that, what is it, 100 and?
There's $198,000 there, but in addition to that, we did get our plan con reimbursement this year, which was unbudgeted for, and that's a one-time revenue, as I indicated, which does make sense to use for one-time expenses. If we consider this the, one of the one-time expenses we want to use it for, that's an option.
And how much is that that we're getting back from?
That was around $380,000.
So we're getting, you know, between those two, you know, 400, more than $400,000, and $16,000 is a lot of money, but it seems like this is going to be, you know, tax neutral. We're not going to have to raise taxes in order to pay for this. And it seems to me that it will save us money down the road because we don't have to pay to store this stuff, just throw it out. And then we don't, I mean, I would rather pay $16,000 to throw it out than pay $16,000 every year to keep it. So I don't know how much it is to store stuff, but I don't like to put stuff in storage that we can just throw out. Why do we keep the crap around when we can just throw it out? And I would rather pay somebody, and honestly, $16,000 to me, if we were paying, you know, a professional organizer to come in and professionally organize all of this stuff, it would probably cost more than that. So to me, it seems like we have the money, and it will be money well spent, and it will save us money in the future. That's my opinion.
So I just think it's a problem that's obviously not going away. It's just going to keep building on itself. My question, maybe, I still would be stunned if it's 1,000 hours worth of work. So I know that we're padding for any possible scenario, but if it actually ends up costing us $16,000, that'll be a surprise. I know anything's possible. I'm just wondering, a lot based on what Rick said, if we could just prioritize it, start at the stuff that we have to do now, see how it's going, see how much time it's really taking, and then when we get down to the 1960s, you know, it might be prudent to say, you know, from personal experience, I remember going to Central High in Philadelphia with my grandfather at 75 years old to get his high school diploma because he went back to college in his boredom of retirement. I think that might be the reason for the 100-year rule because I know anybody who goes back to school, and a lot of people do it. My wife just went and got another degree, and even though she had one from Temple already, they still needed to see her high school diploma, which she did not have. So she had to get that, I won't say what year. But I think maybe that's the reason for the 100-year rule because anybody at any age could decide. And I know that's got to be a real task to go through a big file and pull out just those pieces of paper. I'm interested in knowing some more information, like, is Power School a legal record? It might not be acceptable as a legal record. I don't know.
It prints transcripts that, once they are appropriately stamped, that they become legal, becomes a legal transcript.
Okay, so 20 years from now, if somebody that graduates in 2015 wants to get their diploma, we could get it that way from that digital record?
Yeah, presumably, if we were moved to another system, we would have to figure out, work with.
Migrate.
Whoever the new gender.
Right.
To be, to migrate those records so that they're accessible.
Right.
I'm not looking forward to that.
Claim your retirement well.
Maybe we could print them. So, I mean, I'm of the opinion that it's a problem that has to be dealt with, and it's not going away. I'm more looking towards, you know, how do we not get in this situation again with boxes of overflowing files? How can we be proactive to never build up a potential? It could be 16,000, it could be 50, it could be five, until they get into it and start figuring out. But I agree, something has to happen, but I also agree that we shouldn't sit on something until it's $16,000 worth of a problem that we knew was building. And current administration, not included because nobody worked here in 1960, but it's been building for that long. So not just this, but for anything else, how do we make sure we don't get in a big hole where we have to actually sit in front of the board and figure out how we're going to throw files out? But the other thing I would say is that something like this, I wish it would have been budgeted for and predicted so that we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be here approving extra. It would have just been in there, we could have talked about. I know things come up. I mean, it always happens, but that's just another thing to throw out there, that if we knew about it and we wouldn't be arguing about it now, or not arguing, but discussing, you know, the ins and outs. If it was budgeted for and planned for, it would just be more of a done deal. So that's just my inputs.
Just one other question. The high school file rooms that we're talking about, the two rooms worth of stuff, student stuff, that we're talking about, is just part one, based on what you're telling me? Because we still have the issue of the records in the district office. So is the estimate of 16,000, 1,000 hours of work just for the high school, or does that include the district office as well?
That's really hard for us to gauge, but if you could let us get started with the person over there, will give us a much better idea of, like Matt said, what we're looking at. And we can start from the more recent files. So if it does become a larger animal than we're ready to tackle, then we'll consider moving the oldest files, like you said, and leaving them intact, and then getting over here. Because this, we have to do something about before next year. Actually, we need to be doing something about it now because we've got boxes in the, where parents meet, we have boxes on the top of the boxes and top of the filing cabinets, and it's just, it just needs to be done.
I want to.
Just to put your minds at ease, too, I just want to say one more thing. This is the document that I've been working on for the last few days of really being a lot more thorough about how the files are maintained and then who's responsible for purging which documents. So like Matt said, it doesn't, people, then we have to train our staff. So then, once everybody understands what their role is, and like I said at the end of the year, you know, I'm the HR secretary, I go in the back, I purge the ones that, from the, you know, the last year, I have to keep, and that's done. And, you know, everyone has a job, and they know what it is because it's going to be in the manual that tells them what to do. So that's what we're working on.
Is it correct to say the statement, what we're proposing to do and approve is a hourly rate and not a guaranteed 16,000? So if they get it done in less than 1,000 hours, Shelley will probably have a party for us. But the max we're going to pay is 16 at this point, until something else would be approved, right?
Yeah, that was my question, one of my questions. Your request tonight is for a maximum of 1,000 hours to get this started. A second, you know, we have a lot of old, I walked through, I saw everything, we have a lot of old files. Wouldn't it be prudent, maybe we take a lot of those really old files, get them out, move them like somebody mentioned to West? Hear me out, okay? And if a request comes for 1950, 1960, 1940, whatever, you tell the person, well, that's going to take five business days to file your, to fill your request, and then somebody can work on that. And then, we can work on purging the newer ones, the more recent ones, you know? If we could do that, and that would help free up the storage space quicker here, and then we can work on prudently using that expense on the newer files and get that out of the way of the construction here. It's just a thought.
No, that's what we were going to do. I mean, based on Rick's suggestion, but we won't move them right away because if we purge enough of the other ones, we might not need to. We might be okay. And I'd feel more comfortable having them all in the same place, under lock and key, which is what we have now. You know, they just can't be put anywhere. And those classrooms at West, we do use for various things, so I'd, if it's possible to keep them all together, under lock and key with one secretary responsible for them, I would feel most comfortable with that.
This question is actually to Rick and John. Have you guys physically moved full-stuffed file cabinets before?
Tell me, I do the living.
You move them full?
I move them full with an anchor on the strap.
All right. My suggestion would be to empty them first, and if we're going to do that, you know, empty them, as we go through them.
I think.
John knows more than me.
Yeah, I think, like what Matt was saying, and I think John said the same thing, and maybe Rick said the same thing. I think that if, obviously, it needs to be addressed, but I think everybody would feel better if we said, okay, this is the amount we're willing to commit to this, and there's a lot of problems and a lot of, you know, parts. And as you go along and you see, you know, say, okay, this is what we need to do first. Because if that's, you know, if the high school's first, and we get half of that, and then work on the rest of it later, and then half of that, and whatever you need to do, but I think it would make everybody feel better if we knew this is the amount we're committing to this project, and have you guys prioritize as you get into it, okay, you know what, this is going slower than we want to, let's go over here so we can get it where it needs to be, so that it's, you know, usable.
Well, my thought is that since the original proposal was for purging all of the files, and that was estimated at 16, 1,000 hours, at $16.
That was Dave coming up with a number to get us going. I just want to be clear, I don't think he's a mind reader, nor am I, on what this is going to take, so.
Well, I'm coming. I'm coming up with a number and cutting in half, since we're not going to purge all the files, and saying, let's start with an approval of 8,000, and see how far that takes us.
I'll be back in two weeks to take you on another tour.
So you think, you're so sure it's going to be more than 500 hours?
I think it's going to be close to this many hours, but. I mean, it's my hope that we can get that done, and then get over here and get some of this done. I mean, we want to clean this up, and we're going to do the best job that we can in the most efficient way possible. I mean, we're not trying to frivolously spend money here. We know there's an issue, and we're trying to solve it and then figure out a way to move forwards. But whatever you're comfortable with, I could bring a report back in two weeks, it tells you how many files we've purged, once the person starts, if that would be helpful. I mean, that's not a problem. Then you would know.
Just one quick question. Are these files going to be in fireproof filing cabinets?
They're not.
They're like in?
They're just in.
They're metal?
I have one more, too, and it's just, don't answer it now. Okay? But if we're following our policies, there's legal requirements and then our policy, so if we need to reconsider if we're keeping things longer than we need to, just so, another item to make sure we don't get in this hole again, I don't think we should get rid of things that we need. But if it's our own policies creating the paperwork and we have to relook at that, then fine, too. It's just something else I would keep in mind to try and keep us out of the hole in the future.
Thank you for touring with me.
A couple of weeks ago, we all voted to not spend money on things that are non-emergency. I'm not sure if this is classified as an emergency with an alternative. Sounds more as though a lack of planning, which is not an emergency, per se. I'm just not inclined to just say yes when we can store the documents and wait at this point. But I will say, great discussion over 16, $10,000. So I know we got a lot of money coming in, and $63 million to go with a $700,000 shortfall, so we should probably anticipate some long conversations about this budget, which is exciting. So we have a motion, a second. Are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I do have a comment. I do believe that this needs to be done. We can't have files here, there, everywhere. And I know we're trying to keep back on our spending, but we do have money coming in, and I think it's necessary that we start it right away.
I mean, you mentioned poor planning, but unfortunately, it was, it's been brought to light now, so, you know, it's better addressed, I think. Now we know, let's do something about it.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Motion carries. Committee reports.
The way we designed this this evening is just to go department by department, doing our budget presentations for you. And the first budget is the facilities department, and Mr. Nestor's going to be presenting that budget in the midst of our transition to our new director.
Thank you, Ms. Fiola. If you'll think back to the overall budget presentation I made to you a while back, I indicated to you that there were three main drivers in our budget that accounted for more than 100% of the increase in expenditures. That was salary increases, the increase in the retirement rate, and increases in charter school tuitions. What you'll see tonight is the main district budget presentations for the departments housed here at the central office. And I think you'll see that what's being presented tonight correlates with what I've told you. Very limited, if any, increase in any department. The one thing I want to point out to you before we get started is that the departments do not budget for their own salaries and benefits, okay? That's done through the business office in a global format. So they're given budgetary responsibility over contracted services, supplies, equipment, tuitions, things like that. So we'll go through the process with you, and as Ms. Fiola said, I'm going to present the facilities budget presentation this year. So the first component is what does this comprise? There's three separate functions.
Excuse me, can I just interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
I just wanted to remind board members that in your board packet, the PowerPoint's in there, but also the specific budget that's being referenced, one by one. So you have that in there, and Dave, starting with the facilities budget. Sorry, Dave, I just wanted to make sure. It goes under your, Dave has this so well organized, it's your tab six, I believe, is where it belongs in your binder, so when you get home, you know where to put it.
Thank you. I intended to say that before I got started. But there are three separate functions for the facilities department. One is the maintenance department, which does all the repairs and construction stuff within the district. The second is the custodial services, which clean all of our buildings. And third is our grounds department, which provides all the landscaping, lawn care, maintenance of our playgrounds and things of that nature. And the last component on here that you'll see is our operations. When we get there, you'll see that this is all the cost to run the building, our fuel, our electric, our water and sewer, our snow plowing, things like that. So here, this is a very, very high-level budget presentation. We tried to keep it streamlined it since you have a lot of detail in your budget manuals already. But you'll see some of the major components that are incorporated in the maintenance budget here, from professional services, repairs and maintenance, whatnot. The professional services could be maintenance agreements for boiler certifications or elevator certifications, things of that nature, rental of equipment for repairs, as well as supplies and uniforms for our staff. If you look at the bottom, the bottom right, the budget for the year is $317,450, which represents a 4.5% decrease from last year's budget. You'll see a lot of the similar budgetary line items for our custodial department, but this is for the lion's share of our Teamsters group. but this is for the, the lion's share of our Teamsters Group, um, we probably have about twenty-five custodians who serve our district throughout, uh, throughout our various buildings, mostly on a second shift, uh, the, the costs involved with this program total a hundred-and-forty-three thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars, uh, which is a modest five-hundred dollars less than the prior year, I don't wanna make it look like it's a, a big savings, but it is slightly less than last year. In our Grounds Department, our biggest cost there are fertilization, and this year, salt, which quite, we, we were lucky enough to be able to say that we had salt when we needed it, where, uh, some places were having difficulty getting it, but, um, we, we used a lot of salt this year, but in any case, um, you know, maintaining our athletic fields, fertilizing, weed control, mulching our playgrounds, our, uh, play areas, things of that nature, uh, there is a lot of supplies involved, uh, plus our vehicles need to mow grass, so there's a lot of fuel for the lawnmowers and the, and the vehicles to transport the lawnmowers, so, um, we're not budgeting an increase or a decrease in this category for this year, so it's going to stay stable at seventy-nine thousand nine-hundred dollars. The largest component of the budget are things that are somewhat beyond our control, uh, our utility costs, uh, and as you can see here, the budget for the year is just shy of one-point-two million dollars, and it is up slightly from last year, uh, the biggest, biggest components of the budget are fuel, oil, natural gas, and electricity. Now, we've had some conversations about the middle school, possibly trying to get that to be served by a natural gas line, which we think will reduce our fuel, oil costs, um, but that building is also a, a, a large consumer of electricity, um, by sitting up on top of the hill like, like it does, a lot of cold winds and things like that require a lot of, uh, utilities to be used there. It's a very modest increase of two percent, but it's comprised of only two items, everything else, we're budgeting neutral, um, our telephone is budgeted to be up fourteen thousand dollars, and that is not an increase in expenditures, but we have a program that we take advantage of here in the district, and most other school districts do, called E-Rate, and E-Rate, uh, if you, if you look at your telephone bill at home, there's a universal service charge that everybody pays on their, on their telephone bill, that money is stockpiled at the federal level, and then divvied out to libraries and schools across the United States to defray the cost of their historically telephone services, um, they made a change in the process this year, and they're de-emphasizing, uh, right, traditional telephone services, and they're working more towards, uh, internal connections for computerization, networking, uh, infrastructure, and things like that, so, what will happen is, each year, until it goes away, we will have a twenty percent year-over-year reduction in the amount of E-Rate funds we get back, we do not recognize those as revenues, we recognize those as reductions to the expense, so the fourteen thousand dollars is really just the reduction in this federal E-Rate money that we're not going to get, we're not projecting to get this year, uh, another twenty percent will go away next year, and then it should be gone after that, uh, on the flip side, uh, Mr. Wagman will talk to you about this later, but there is the potential to be able to apply for certain internal, uh, network components to be funded through E-Rate as we go forward, uh, but for the time being, in the utility stage, we're gonna suffer a minus decrease there in funding, um, and also, we're projecting a, a modest nine-thousand-dollar increase in electric consumption for the year. Sure.
With the phones, um, our current, um, telecom provider, I believe that agreement ends next, the end of next year, so we'll see what, how much of those increasing expenses or, or decreasing subsidies, uh, we can mitigate as we go out to the marketplace and negotiate for, you know, you know, for phone service.
Thank you.
Um, given the huge drop in fuel, oil, gasoline, uh, heating oil, uh, that has occurred during this past half year, um, shouldn't our actual costs for this year prove to be much lower than the amounts budgeted here?
The amounts for the current year will likely be lower, uh, we have not gone back and revised our projections yet at this point in time for the current fiscal year, but even though we've dropped drastically, there's no, no guarantee that it will stay at those low levels as we go into the next heating season.
So our strategy then is to just budget at the, at the same amount?
Well, we're gonna keep, continue to monitor it, but I think it'd be prudent for us not to cut back too drastically, and then, uh, be in a position where we come up short, but we will continue to monitor this as we get closer to the budget adoption period.
Well, I mean, I've skipped ahead, but, I mean, it seems like we're mostly flat, uh, but with a few increases in this budget, but, uh, there could be a fairly substantial savings in the, these areas if the prices stay low, and so I was just wondering if we're going to adjust, we're dealing with an eight-hundred thousand dollar deficit, and every dollar counts, right, so.
Correct.
Just a quick question, what, what type of phone system do we use in the buildings? Is it voice-over IP or analog?
Voice-over IP.
Voice-over IP.
Yeah.
And then the service, do they hold government agencies to the contract, or is there, you know, could you bid it when you chose to?
Well, we're still, um, we are still getting E-Rate subsidies, so we can't, under, under E-Rate rules, unless there's, unless we can demonstrate that there is some violation of our contract agreement on the part of the vendor, uh, we can't break that contract and still get E-Rate subsidy.
But we do, we do consider the, the process each winter-
We do, yeah.
-for the upcoming, uh, school year.
Yeah, when the E-Rate season opens again in December, at that point, we'll be in the final year of our current agreement, and we can go out shopping.
So here is a summary of the, of the budget for the Facilities Department, um, as you can see, uh, the lion's share is in the operations area, um, it's a seventy-nine-hundred-dollar increase in total over last year, um, which is offset by, uh, savings in other, other areas throughout the district, um, but it's a point, represents a point-four-six percent increase to, to the facility budget, and as, as indicated, we will continue to monitor this area as we get closer to, uh, budget adoption time, so, any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Um, so this just encompasses, um, basically the maintenance of our facilities, and, and to pay the cost of, you know, utilities and things like that, it doesn't take into account any kind of improvements that we need to make, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, um, with, with the minor exception, I mean, there, there's a, a couple of small pieces of equipment in here, um, uh, obviously, as we embark on with a new facilities leadership team, uh, there may be a different, uh, slightly different direction taken, there may be some different pieces of equipment that, uh, they wish to purchase, we'll, we'll have to weigh some of the pros and cons of those things, um, but yes, this does not incorporate any, um, rent, minor renovations, or additions to any of our facilities.
And next up will be Mr. D'Renzo, Athletic Budget.
Do I need a microphone? Can everybody hear me okay? First microphone, I have to lift. Can everybody hear me? First of all, I would like to, just real quick thing, um, this past Saturday, we had our, our stage dedication, uh, and, to, to Mr. Kelly, and in the fall, we had our field dedication to, uh, Mr. Penny Packer, and I would again like to, uh, to thank the board for your, um, your sight, and your foresight, really, and, and celebrating those two individuals, um, both, both nights were, um, what I would consider in a twenty-six-year professional career, a highlight, to, to be able to celebrate, uh, our colleagues, so, again, to the board, I say thank you, and I just wanted to share that with you real quick, um, and before I get started here, there's a little article that appeared in the Mercury today, our cross-country team donated, uh, two thousand dollars to the homeless shelter down in Pottstown, they do that from the revenue from the turkey trot, uh, that some of us run, uh, on Thanksgiving, so, um, that was just a little piece, I'll pass that around for you then, can I just take a look at that? Uh, the Athletic Budget, uh, really, there's a, a five-year kinda synopsis of, of the budget, and, uh, as you can see, we've, we've tried to really, um, tighten our belts, and, uh, I think we've done a very good job, we, I, I, I think we've done a, a very good job, our coach has been, um, very accepting of some of the things that we've done, um, we've consolidated a lot of things, we went from, uh, what uniforms used to be very, um, um, custom-oriented to a more stock uniform across the board, so that's helped in, in really saving some, some dollars throughout the year, so that's a five-year synopsis. Uh, just as Dave talked about what's, what the maintenance program is, this is some, really just, uh, really, uh, an overview of what we do, in the secondary, um, the Athletic Department is grade seven through twelve, we're under the auspices of P.I.A., which is the Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletic Association, sports begin, uh, under that umbrella in grade seven, so we are responsible all the way through, um, grades seven through twelve, at the high school, we have twenty-four varsity and junior varsity sports, uh, again, we're compliant with all the rules and regulations, we're Title IX compliant, uh, we have twelve boys' sports, twelve girls' sports, um, our ninth-grade sports tend to fluctuate with our, our participation, um, if we have enough student, student athletes for that grade level, we, we put the team on the field, if we do not, we, uh, merge them with our junior varsity programs, um, and just as, again, I'm a numbers guy, um, and I like to see, I like to see numbers to be able to quantify things, um, without coaching salaries, we spend about fifty-eight dollars per student athlete, um, again, I think, um, I know I'm, I'm very, uh, impressed with the, the fact that we can do that, because that's a pretty good bang for your dollar, fifty-eight dollars, with salaries, it's a hundred-and-fifty-five dollars per student, uh, and again, we are operating at about thirty percent of our, uh, population in the high school that participate in at least one, uh, P.I.A. sport for the year, at the middle school level, uh, we're a little bit lower, twenty-three total sports, uh, again, each sport is delineated, and it's a little bit different, um, the middle school philosophy is much more based on to promote participation, so oftentimes, we have a little bit higher numbers, um, we have some combined teams, et cetera, um, and, and again, we're about thirty-two percent, and, and really, those numbers are very much in line with what's going on across the, across the nation, and in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, um, I will tell you this, some of the things that we've done at the middle school, we've, we've had some, um, some benefit from our partners in the community, Lower Pots Grove Athletic Association has, um, has helped us tremendously with the purchase of some uniforms, et cetera, oftentimes, we, we do at the high school, we, we sometimes pass uniforms down, um, that becomes increasingly difficult at times, because the size of these kids, um, can fluctuate, and, um, I'm not saying it's bad, but we got some small kids at the middle school, and I was one of them, so, uh, LPAA has been very generous over the years, uh, specifically the last three years, in helping us purchase some uniforms, so, um, we've saved a little bit of dollars there, um, I'm gonna touch on some of the bigger, uh, account numbers, this is our four-hundred, and, uh, this is one where, really, this is where we do much of our savings, uh, in the big picture, um, what we do is reconditioning and repairs, we recondition quite a bit of our uniforms and our equipment, and what that means is if we get a helmet, or a shoulder pad, uh, or protective body equipment for boys and girls across, um, we take that, and it might be a little bit damaged, it might be a little bit worn, we send it out to a reconditioner, who recertifies it, fixes it, mends it, et cetera, and then recertifies it, uh, with the, uh, the national standard for safety, and as well as P.I.A. standards, um, all of our scales have to be calibrated for weigh-ins, um, you know, obviously, we have portable scoreboards and, and communication things, um, that need to be repaired and, and, and fixed, um, we also rent porta-potties at different, uh, athletic sites, because we use three different locations to, uh, conduct, um, our athletic events, some of our large rentals, and I'm not sure everybody's aware of that, for, excuse me, for us to rent the YMCA pool, that's a ninety-three-hundred-dollar expense, so, you can see the total there, as lo, as well as the greens fees for Blackwood Golf Course, um, just those two rentals alone, um, show a substantial amount of dollars that are allocated to, um, a few programs, but, uh, again, that reconditioning is, uh, is very important as far as being able to, um, put equipment back in our hands that's, that's usable and safe, the five-hundred code is, um, our insurance, uh, we purchase additional insurance for all sports, um, if a student athlete gets hurt, obviously, they use their own, uh, insurance first, but if there's additional cost, um, the insurance that we buy will ensure that, uh, they, that a parent will not have to incur additional expense that's, uh, on that, that insurance, our communications and cell phones for our, uh, high school, uh, staff and athletic trainers, again, we're off-site a lot, we're on remote places, so, uh, the communications piece is, uh, is critical if we have some type of accident or, or an injury, um, our clinics and, and our state, um, competition, uh, we have been very, we've been very successful at that level, uh, at the district level and state level, uh, but when we do go, we have to, if it's an overnight expense, we have to go and pay for the hotel of our coach or coaches, and our student athletes as well, our six-hundred code, and really, this is the, um, this is the supply, this is all those things I talked about earlier, grade seven through twelve, every piece of equipment, every uniform, every medical supply that we use on all of those student athletes come out of this, this dollar amount, and, um, it's a challenge to, uh, outfit everybody and make sure we get equipment, one of the things we had this year, um, the P.I.A. changed the, uh, rules as far as what balls we could use, um, so, the P.I.A. says that for us to compete in a P.I.A. sanctioned event, we have to use a certain ball, um, therefore, if we had balls from last year, that might have been a Wilson brand, that now we have to buy a Rawlings brand, so, again, um, just as we all have costs that we're not aware of, that's one of those things that, that came around this year that we had to change, and, uh, buy different sets of balls, so, um, that's, uh, that's our six-hundred, seven-hundred is really additional equipment, um, the goals, and again, these are relatively bigger items, so, seven thousand dollars, a pair of soc, one pair of soccer goals is about twelve-hundred to thirteen-hundred dollars, uh, we try to replace at least one or two things each year, we always need basketball, uh, goals, tennis nets, et cetera, the pitching screens, and the netting, as you know, oftentimes gets, you know, if it goes through a winter, if it gets hit by a mower or weed whacker, um, once it's cut, it becomes a liability, so they have to be replaced, so that's, that's the seven-hundred code, eight-hundred is our entry fees and dues for, to be a member of the P.I.A., the District One, our league entry fees for membership for, for both the high school and the middle school, and then all of our entry fees for all of our, our teams to go to different, uh, events throughout the year, track and field, um, if you look at our schedule, every Saturday or every Saturday, we go to an invitational, and we try to do that, obviously, it's graduated a little bit from the high school down to the middle school, but we try to give, you know, our middle school kids at least one or two invitationals, uh, or a tournament to be able to participate, to participate in, so they understand, uh, as they, as they move forward, and, uh, this year, again, I talked about, you know, the, they changed the balls, this year, effective July first, uh, the P.I.A. is requiring coaches, uh, additional coaches, uh, training, there will be two programs that all of our coaches will need to, um, take, it's the fundamentals of coaching, and, uh, a first aid, health, and safety for coaches, so, at the end, we're going, Mr. Thomas has already gone through a certification class, and we're going to start certifying our coaches this summer, um, again, I didn't, I- Again, I didn't, I didn't add a lot. We're going to use, try to use $3,000 from the 500 code. I talked about clinics and from that, from that account code to start, to start that process. We have 76 coaches. Obviously, some coaches coach more than one sport, so we have three years to be able to move all these coaches through and then certify them all. And then as we hire coaches after this year, they have to go through this coaching program. And each, each coach, it's a $95 program, which they take an online course. We do some in-class instruction, and then they must take a core test and pass it. That's it. Any questions?
Gary, first, let me say thank you for, for holding the line on your expenditures. There's only one in the entire budget, which is higher. And that's where really where my question is, and I mean no criticism, I'm just curious. In the, that equipment category, you mentioned the balls and nets and the like, but you spent, we spent almost double what we did, what we budgeted, and yet you're still only conservatively estimating a couple of thousand more for this year in that budget area. So I'm just curious if you're under-budgeting that one, or was it, was it just one-time stuff that's not?
Well, sometimes it's one-time stuff. For example, this year, we need a new, the PIAA mandated a new collar system inside the pole vault pit. So that's a one-time purchase. Sometimes this stuff is one-time, and it lasts. You know, it just, we have to account for it. I mean, I didn't, I didn't buy a lot of balls this year. I bought, you know, what we needed to get by for this year. It's a three-year program with PIAA. In three years, that contract could go away, and we could be mandated to buy different balls. So I try to stay as close as I can, but I also try to have a little bit of a, you know, at least some balls that are, you know, I like to have our kids at the middle school and high school have the same equipment. Sure.
I just have one quick question. Thank you, Gary. As always, you do a good job for the district. When it comes to awards, plaques, jackets, where does that budget fall into? Is that with the athletic budget, or is that?
For championships, or? That is an unbudgeted expense.
Does that come out of the athletic?
It typically does, but we supplement as budget for those.
I'm only bringing this up because I thought of it previously, and since you just mentioned those awards, plaques, and jackets, couldn't that, in the future, come out of the Market Street funds?
The use of that, of those funds is at your discretion as Board of School Directors.
Seems like a, like a really worthwhile way to fund those things, given that, that Market Street money is coming from sponsors for the athletics in particular. So just something to think about for the next time it happens, and hopefully it'll happen soon with some of our teams.
See, I would like to see that, that fund be used for the one time, like you say, like the pole vault pit, you know, and maybe miscellaneous equipment that you have to get that you don't have budgeted. I'd rather see the Market Street money go for that one time than the plaques because, and jackets, because that's, you can't anticipate when the kids are going to use that.
Gary, I just wanted to comment that what a great job you do and our coaching staff does in our district. For the small of a district as we are, and the little that we pay per player, we get amazing dividends in our, in our students. And, so I don't have a question, but I just want to say thank you to you and also to all of the coaching staff and for the great results that they get from our students and for such a small school district that we are. I think we just, we have amazing athletes, and we have amazing coaches, and I'm always impressed with how well we do.
Thank you. That means a lot. Thank you.
I have to second what Dee said. I know for, for something that 30% of the student body participates in, to be 0.2% of the budget is a big challenge. And I know every school district is working under the same restrictions. It's not unique to us, but what you guys are able to do for the kids with, you know, such a tight budget is, is great. And I just say that anything that we can do, or anything that the community can do to support the extracurriculars at Pots Grove, whether it's athletics, or music, or anything, it's a great cause because they really do have very little to work with, and they serve a huge portion of the student body, and they serve them well.
Thank you. We have good people here.
Gary, can I, I have a question that, I don't know if some of the board members may not be aware, or even the people in the audience. Where do the gate proceeds go to that you receive for, let's say, football and basketball?
They pay for the officials. That's really a turnaround.
I know football officials don't get paid that much.
When you've got five of them at a game, they do.
It, the, like, on a much grander scale at the collegiate level, football is the revenue generator that covers the cost of every other sport. So whether it be a baseball umpire, when there's a modest number of people that have no, no fee to attend the game, or, you know, whatever the, whatever the sport, swimming, you know, that, the football program generates the revenue that is then able to pay for the referee time for every other sport.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. And we're going to move on to the technology budget with Mr. Wagman.
Okay. Technology budget proposed for 2015-16. This year's current budget is $1,210,581. That, we had a good bit of conversation last year, and that encompasses the one-to-one. It's not, it's not our, it's certainly at, close to, or about at the district's highest point. Just to go back in time, we had done a number of years where we were doing budget reductions. So this kind of put us, in order to fund the one-to-one, we sort of backfilled all those savings and, you know, and got us back to where, you know, roughly where we were in 2008, 2009. This year, the proposed budget is slightly lower. Again, like Dave, I don't want to, you know, I don't think we're going to be writing stories about this, but it's just a tad lower, $1,209,792. There are four broad categories in the district technology budget that accounts for about 93% of that figure. And those are our leases on all of our computers, and except for a handful of computers that we do own, the vast majority of them, probably 98% of them are leased, are leased devices. Software, new technology, and I'll talk a little bit about what that is when we get to that, and, and maintenance contracts. Maintenance contracts, for those in the IT world, you know that you can't install a system without maintenance contracts. And we've done, and over the course of the years, we've really looked hard at those maintenance contracts. In some cases, we've chosen vendors based on the total cost of ownership, because some vendors have, you know, some brand, branded products have very, very high maintenance costs, and we've tried to steer clear of those when we could find something that doesn't have those kinds of costs and offer the same, you know, same quality of service. But at the same time, as we were cutting our maintenance costs, we were also adding additional systems. So we were sort of backfilling, you know, the savings with additional, with additional systems that have come online. And those maintenance costs are not, you know, I'll talk a little bit about that when I get there. So, so those are our four big buckets, and again, 93% of the total tech budget. The leases, leases are the single highest line item in the budget. It encompasses essentially four larger leases and one very small lease that, that includes all of our office, you know, our school office and business office equipment. That's, that's a separate Dell lease. And then the, the computers that teachers, administrators, and students use are divided up into, into four, into four leases. That keeps us on a, on a steady four-year replacement cycle. So that's what, that's what that includes. And that number is, is 653,705. And again, that's, there's really been no, no increase. When we retire our next lease, we're not looking at increasing the size of the lease that we backfill. Software. This is, covers a wide range of, of systems, including our website, our learning management system, all of our communication systems. So, you know, that would be Big List, which is our community mail list system. I believe, no, School Messenger's not in there, that's in a different category. So that's, so that, that's a chunk of the software. All of our network management software, our monitoring of our systems, and all the systems that integrate, that allow all of our, our various database systems to talk to each other. That's all covered under, under software. All of our help desk, human resource systems, any district, any district-wide deployments of software. We kind of share the software with the buildings. It depends really on, on how broad the, the application is. But if it's, if it's a district-wide implementation, it usually comes from our budget. We'll also seed some pilots, and, and we have some funds we put in place for, for mobile apps. Certainly, a big chunk of the budget is licensing for Microsoft Office. There are alternatives, but at this point, it's, it is the, it is still the industry standard, though we are, we do migrate over to Google, to Google Docs and to Apple's suite. But at this point in time, we're still supporting Microsoft Office because it is, again, it is, it is a standard. It's the spreadsheets and PowerPoint and, and all of that, and it is licensed throughout the district. And then we have the Adobe Creative Suite, which gives you, you know, the Photoshop and, you know, some of the creative, creative software, Adobe Acrobat and so on. So that, that figure is $112,305. Okay, new technology. This is a category that can vary from year to year depending on what the needs are. This year, our, our needs are very modest. I mean, we've obviously made, over the course of the last several years, significant investments in new technology to prepare our infrastructure for the one-to-one, to just simply, you know, maintain our, and to grow our broadband as more and more streaming services came online, and we had to be able to support that. And those kinds of things, we've, we've done, you know, we've done a good bit of work on our network over, over the course of the years through combination of budget and, and capital, and capital expenditures. So we don't need to do a lot of that work, we don't need to do much of that work now. So we're really only looking at two areas. Storage seems to be a hot topic at the moment. We are looking at one more additional storage device, and we started that project last year. It's a storage area network. We have one, and we're, we, we had planned to deploy two over two years. And the other is, is a one-3D printer to support our STEM expansion at, at the high school, and that would actually be a network resource. It is, is networkable. So those are really the only two expenditures that we're, we're looking at at this point in time. Now, there will, there will be needs in future years, but as, as Mr. Nester mentioned, E-Rate is kind of, the E-Rate program has kind of shifted its priorities so that while we're losing a lot of money on telecom services, and we're also losing our E-Rate reimbursement on our web hosting, and we were able to negotiate a slightly lower, well, actually significantly lower price, and we scaled back on some of our web services in order to try to mitigate that, you know, that loss. And School Wires was very, very cooperative with us, and probably weren't alone making that phone call. But also, going forward, we'll be eligible under the new E-Rate program for what's called Category Two funding. We have not, in the past, been eligible for that. Our, usually, Category Two funding was made available to do infrastructure, band, infrastructure to improve bandwidth, and it usually was a benefit to districts that were much poorer than us, and it was a set amount of money, and then when it ran out, you know, it didn't quite trickle down to, you know, to, you know, our, to our district. So we've been on our own doing that. That has changed. There's been a lot more money put into that program. My expectation is that we'll be able to keep this line item in our budget fairly modest, at least in the next few years, as, as we apply for E-Rate reimbursement for future infrastructure investments that, that we make. We are still being reimbursed for E-Rate on our, on our bandwidth, on our, just our internet transport costs and our fiber leases. Maintenance, this is our second biggest expenditure after leases. It's really sort of a misnomer, it's because it's more than, you know, it's more than maintenance and repair. Again, it's all of our internet connectivity costs. It's our, it's our network fiber that runs between our buildings. We lease that, we lease that fiber. It's the gazillion maintenance agreements that, that we have with, with Power School, Cisco, which is our phone, you know, our voice-over IP system, you know, all the network hardware division, which is our business office system, all these maintenance contracts, and also computer, computer and projector maintenance, such as consumables, you know, bulbs, which can run about $200 to $250 per bulb, depending on the projector model. All that is, is in the, in the maintenance. I just want to step back for one second. Network, back here. Okay. So that's, that's our maintenance. And, and actually, those are our four categories, and that, that brings us, again, to that 93% of, of the budget. Are there, are there any questions?
I have a question. It looks like overall, your budget is, you know, fairly stable, but I did notice that in your, in the maintenance category, that this year's budget is a $47,000, or a $57,000 increase over the past years. Could you just kind of?
Yes, I can.
Elaborate?
Yes, I knew that question was coming, so I'm, I prepared. Yes, there's a $6,000 expenditure that we, for, for new cloud storage system that, that we have there, or actually, it's a, it's for our archiver. There's, we budgeted a little bit more with the intermediate unit for services like School Messenger, for School Messenger, which we purchased through an IU consortium agreement, and also for some additional bandwidth that we purchased. Probably the biggest driver in that is the management suite we use now to, to manage all the one-to-one devices. But in addition to that, we will probably be expanding that system to, to encompass staff machines as well, because what that gives us is the ability to load software onto a, onto a sort of a private cloud self-service portal. And so... And so, um, we can essentially have, uh, students and teachers do their own software downloads based on their, based on their needs. So it's a lot more efficient way to deploy, uh, updates, um, like every time Adobe Flash updates, we can put that update, um, for our students especially, who can't install software from outside, we can put that update there and they can download it. So that, that was probably our biggest kick to that, uh, to that portion of the budget. Um, and, uh, the rest are, you know, uh, we moved a few things around for, out of other budget areas that accounts for the rest.
Michael, what is the amount for that management system?
Um, it's, um, twenty thousand.
Is that one-time or is it going to be ongoing?
Well, it's, um, it's actually, um, it's to the, to the life of the, of the agreement. Um, it's a, it's a per, per-device licensing cost, so it's annual.
Oh, so for now it'll be ongoing, right?
For now it's ongoing, yes.
Um, my question is, uh, actually kind of looking forward a little bit-
Mm-hmm.
...uh, in reference to, uh, one-to-one. First question I have is, uh, going back to last year when we were talking about one-to-one, we, um, we, one of the reasons, and I know that there were multiple reasons, that we didn't consider iPads in the high school was, uh, the Carnegie Math, uh, wasn't supported-
That was one.
-on the, on the iPad. And one of the things I remember that you told us was that they were saying that it wouldn't be supported on the iPad, at least until two thousand and fifteen.
Yes, and we're hoping-
And it's two thousand and fifteen, so my question is, will that happen this year?
Uh, we're hoping it'll happen in September. That's what they, that's what they're telling us.
Okay, so then, looking forward, um, to a day when maybe, uh, we have iPads across the board instead of, it's, or, or whatever device-
Yeah.
-that replaces the iPad, if that ever happens, um, instead of laptops, uh, at the high school, um, we're kind of locked in, if I'm, if I understand how these leases work, for three years in what we've already purchased. Is that a true statement?
Uh, ye- yes and no. I mean, we are locked in, but we can always look, um, back to the A- Apple's financing arm to see if there is a trade-in, trade-up option. Sometimes there are incentives to, um, to, to exit a lease, sell the equipment back and enter into a, into a new lease. Getting to, I think, the, you know, um, where I think you're going with that is, as our kids come up from the middle school, having three years of iPad-
That's exactly where I'm going.
I know where you're going with that, yes. And that's, that's certainly a possibility, and we're going to evaluate it, um, when we're at a point where we can make that, uh, we can make that evaluation.
Right, I mean, there might be an additional expense, uh, because we don't have enough, we don't have one-to-one for physical keyboards, and maybe we decide, uh, when they get to high school, they need a physical keyboard.
We have physical keyboards for every iPad now.
We do, but they, we don't give them to the kid, students.
Um, we, we, we don't unless a student requests one, um, and we can loan, they can check them out from the library.
But there's enough? If every student in the middle school wanted one, we have enough?
But that wouldn't be my deployment preference. Um, but we have, we purchased a keyboard for every computer, and that was mainly, there was a few reasons for that. One was if we, uh, when we move to standardized testing online, the keyboard is going to be required. They are wired keyboards, cause we didn't want to get into Bluetooth with twenty-four compute, uh, iPads in a classroom, uh, but there is a, um, we have them now, uh, available so that teachers can check out class sets of them if they're doing lengthy or writing assignments.
Right, so, so you did anticipate. I mean, the thought is that, uh, if you could potentially, in four years' time, eliminate the, the, um, laptops and, and, uh, be iPads across the board-
iPads.
-simply by having the ninth graders take their machines with them instead of, uh, instead of returning them and, and giving them-
Right, or, again, taking advantage. I mean, we're in contact with Apple annually to see what our financing options are, and, you know, as I said, we're, at this point, I mean, our, our lease rate factor is zero, so, um, it's a good place to be. But looking at options down the road, there may be a, a point in time, because of the retention of value of the equipment, that selling it back and entering into a new lease might be, uh, might be wise. Remember also, in terms of why we have laptops in, in the high school, we did, um, you know, the student leadership team did prefer them. We did, we did actually have a conversation about that, because I was leaning toward iPad six-twelve at the time.
I understand that they're leaning, uh, that way, um, but in li- in, in light of our deficit, I'm looking for any place we can save money.
Yeah.
So, so while I understand that the students and the teachers had a preference, um, my question is, uh, to, for us to understand what we could save if we went this way before we make a decision on the budget.
Yeah, and I, well, I think there is, there's savings to be had there down, you know, down the road, not this year, but certainly down the road. Um, I think there's also other reasons why that might be advisable because of the various educational environments that are, that are being developed for the iPad, such as PA Learns, that is not readily accessible with a laptop computer. So I think there'll be a, a number of reasons why we want to have that conversation.
But you're saying we couldn't see any savings if we did that this, this year?
We're doing-
Or in this coming year?
We're doing a boatload of training right now on, on the laptops. If we pull, if we pull laptops out from under, you know, uh, out from under our, our staff at the high school and we switch it up on them after a year, um, I think that's a recipe for, you know, for disaster at this point. I think once we have a, you know, students, you know, coming up from the middle school who've had three years of iPads, know they can write a paper with a keyboard, um, and, you know, and as it kind, again, as the technology continues to mature and more educational resources are developed, um, I think that is, I, I, I think it's very doable. I think there are schools that are doing it right now. But that's, uh, I don't want to be the one to walk in to the high school and say, um, we're taking your laptops and we're giving you iPads after one year and all the intensive training we've done with our high school faculty around, uh, around the, uh, use of a laptop specifically. We're doing very iPad-specific work in the middle school, and we're doing very laptop-specific work in the high school, and I just think it's, it's, that wouldn't be my recommendation.
Well, not to be difficult, but, well, maybe to be difficult. Is it going to be any better in three years, uh, or two years, when, when you have, uh, students who've had the iPads for three years? Won't those teachers, ninth-grade teachers be just as irritated? Um, uh, a- and, uh, wh- when will it stop being a recipe for disaster?
When, well, a couple of, uh, let me answer in a couple of ways. One, you'll have, uh, uh, many more students who've had the iPad experience, and they're going to be up in the tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade at the time. Secondly, you know, we're often accused, and sometimes justifiably so, by teachers of doing intensive training and then moving on to something else. I don't want to be the administrator that goes in and says, "We just spent all this time training you to do these software applications, but now we're taking those tools away from you, and now we're going to, we're going to train you up on something completely different." Remember, the middle school teachers had iPads for a year before we ever, um, distributed them to students on a one-to-one basis. So they had a lot of experience with the iPads, and we were doing training before they were in the hands of the students. Uh, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, um, and I, and I think we'll get there, um, but I, I don't, you know, I, I, in my professional opinion, it would be a huge mistake to do it next year.
Well, I think it was a huge mistake to go with the laptops to begin with, but nonetheless, here we are.
Michael, two things real quick.
Yeah.
Um, this summer, when we plan to, uh, I guess, our computer program is set up for the seven-point, uh, grading scale, and we go to the ten-point grading scale. Is that included in this, the cost?
It's included in the seven percent that I didn't show you. It's included in contracted services. We added five thousand dollars to contracted services for the purposes of doing that transition.
Okay, um, and second of all, inquiry. The three-D printer you mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a price on that? Is some of that coming from grants or anything like that? Is that offset anything?
Well, right now, it's coming out of, uh, yes, we have a price of about five thousand dollars for a maker bot.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, tonight I'm going to talk a little bit about the pupil services budget, and, um, just to give you an idea, the overall budget is, is a little over three point one million dollars. And then we also get, uh, funding from IDEA, which is in the, which is about two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and we also have approximately eighty-six thousand dollars and five hundred dollars toward, uh, that's funds us with access. As you've heard from other presenters tonight, there's four broad categories, um, of the, that comprise the, the budget. One is tuition, one is IU costs, one is district costs, and one is contract-related services that are associated with, with the various programs. When you look at the tuition costs, what we're talking about here is really things that are comprising, uh, the financials comprising charter schools, um, also looking at out-of-district placements for, um, special ed students, ESY, which is, um, Extended School Year. We have a program in the district, but this is ESY associated with students who are in out-of-district placements, and alternative education as well. When you look at IU costs, we have a cost plan that we agree to every year with Montgomery County IU. Um, there's also, we have some special ed students that are placed in programs in Chester County IU, and this also comprises our court placements and detention center placements at, from out-of-district as well. The contracted-related services part is the, um, services that are related to, uh, students' needs in terms of occupational therapy, speech and language therapy, nursing services, physical therapy. We actually contract with Lincoln Center for an emotional support, um, counselor. There are also needs for transition to, to adulthood for some of our special ed students, so we have jo- job-launching contracts, independent evaluation skills for life skills. And then we also do, um, have what we call, um, some funding for psychiatric services, should we need it, related to students' needs or for evaluations. Um, we, we budget for that every year, and pupil health. So that's, uh, things like your health screenings, your physicals, that comprises some of those pieces as well. And the early intervention. So every year, we have students from early intervention from the IU, and we look to, um, work with them and try to program for them to have a seamless transition to, uh, kindergarten program. Okay? So when we look collectively at the, what are some of the increases that you have before you, this, these are the categories that are the larger increases in, in those materials. One is the charter school costs. That is something that, that isn't within, you know, necessarily my control, but that is a cost that's associated with the budget. Speech and language support, that and occupational therapy, that's usually driven by the student needs, so that fluctuates based on what our student population needs. Uh, the other thing is the early intervention costs. You'll see some increases there, and again, that, right now, is currently a placeholder for us because we get an estimated number of students who are prepared to come to the district, but some of them may not choose to register or come. So we need to base our budget, um, based on the information we get from the IU. Okay? And then we currently go through the process of trying to make sure we're programming for those students, and we're, we'll look and spring to see what are our needs for some of the more, you know, complex students. And then the other thing that you'll see here is that, um, psychological services, when you look at textbooks and supplies, you'll see an increase. And one of the things that there's an increase there for is that, one of the things we need to do is purchase new test kits, so the students, so the psychologists have the latest, um, you know, test materials to identify students for special ed, and so that is only to get the ca- the cost of that. Okay? And then we also have pupil health. So if you look at the pupil health and equipment section, you'll see there's a pretty substantial increase, but really that is because we're, we are looking for a one-time purchase of new AEDY machines. Our current machines in the district, this is a K to twelve to replace them in all the buildings, are past their life. They're either, you know, eight to ten years. We've gotten, I believe, even more, more time out of that, Dave, if I'm not mistaken. And so they are at the point where, um, we need to replace them. And so when you look at that, we went from five hundred up to, you know, quite a substantial increase, but that's a one-time cost. So those are the substantial increases to the budget, um, as we see, but otherwise, everything's pretty much staying the same.
Good evening, everyone. Curriculum has the distinct pleasure of being the caboose to these budget presentations, so I'll try to keep you entertained and thrilled and enthralled with the, with the conversation. So looking at this budget, I do want to talk about two distinct pieces. There's a part of the general fund totaling four hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty-four, and that includes instruction, guidance, not to be confused with guidance that will be caught, um, caught in, uh, Dr. Roberts, but rather guidance has assessment materials, curriculum, and staff development. Okay? Of those four items, instruction, guidance and staff development make up ninety per, ninety-eight, excuse me, ninety-eight percent of this total budget. As a point of reference, last year, this was four hundred thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars budgeted. The other side, or the other arm to this that I'll talk just a little bit about, is Title I, Title II-A, um, and Title III. Those are all federally funded programs that I'll talk a little bit about because we, we're provided money. It's federally funded monies that are allocated to states, and then states allocate them to districts, um, dependent upon need. Okay? And I'll talk a little bit about all of that. So as we look at this, uh, as we look at the overall curriculum budget, set, over seventy percent is right within this particular line item, which is instruction. So that includes textbooks, it includes all the materials and resources that we utilize to support our curriculum as written here in Potts Grove. Um, a- as a point of reference, each year, we do have a very strategic curriculum renewal process. In fact, uh, Dr. Ramage, Dr. Ziegler and I are right now in the stages of meeting with each department. We're looking at our materials and resource inventory that shows us all the materials and resources that are currently supporting our curriculum. We look at them in terms of standard, we look at them in terms of when standards have been updated, uh, when was the most recent time in which the curriculum was revised, how old are some of those materials and/or textbooks, um, and we look at all of that through the lens of when and how do we replace that if needed in the most strategic manner. So that addresses the textbooks piece. In addition, we have software under this particular item, and that, that, you'll see things like Learning A to Z and Tumble Books, which is really supporting leveled readers for students to meet them at both their independent level and their instructional level in terms of reading, uh, as well as Study Island, which is utilized for additional, um, supplemental instruction, um, and some pieces of intervention as well. In addition here, again, you see some of those supplemental materials and resources that we have included in this mountain, and you do see that this is a small increase in that particular area. Uh, the next piece I'll talk about is guidance. Again, not to be confused with guidance counselors, but guidance, this really encompasses a lot of the assessments, um, tracking of student performance that we have, so Performance Tracker, Eames Web, which is a benchmark assessment kind of tool that is utilized here in the district. It also includes some prices for assessment or charges that we are incurred because of assessment. So for example, Terra Nova or PSSA delivery charges, all of that is included in here. You see, there's a very small increase in that particular area as well. Staff development, we have a decrease in this particular area of just under four percent. In our staff development budget, this really encompasses all the staff conference attendance for the district. It also includes summer curriculum writing, so that when we have teams of teachers working over the summer, looking at updating their curriculum as needed to be revised. So again, what they do throughout the year is during PLC's time, they're collecting information about where are some patterns or trends in terms of student performance data that they have frequently throughout the year. As they're looking at that, they're making note of it, and then over the summer, they're involved in curriculum writing to make sure any of those issues are addressed. As you know, curriculum isn't a continually, uh, needed, something that continually needs to be updated. Uh, this also includes, uh, any speakers that we might have, as well as some books for professional burning. To give you some information about title programs, I, just, again, these are one hundred percent federally funded programs. In the case of Title I, it's Financial Assistant for Districts to provide supplemental educational programming for economically disadvantaged students. So what does that look like and how is that utilized here in Potts Grove? It's used to support at least a partial salary of a reading specialist. It's used to, uh, provide salaries for intervention tutors, who are those individuals who are providing small, very small group instruction for some students during, um, tier time in the K-five buildings. I think that's it for Title I. Title II, otherwise known as Improving Teacher Quality, uh, in the past, again, this is a one hundred percent- In the past, again, this is a 100% federally-funded program, and it's really utilized for two things. Number one, to improve the skills of teachers, and number two, to improve the quality of the instruction that students are receiving. This in the past has been utilized for coaches to come into the district, so think about an external coach who can support teachers' ongoing learning about a particular program and program and instructional strategy, anything related to that nature. It also supports a lot of the professional development that we have here in the district. Again, it supports the speakers, and this is an allocated amount that we receive on a year-to-year basis. By the way, as I talk about these title funds, it's important to know that we have little control over the amount of money that we get, and only some control in the ways in which we can use this money. In fact, Title II is one of those that if you don't use those dollars, you lose those dollars, they go away, you send them right back. And then finally, Title III is really supporting students whose prominent language or first language is not English. So making sure that there is programming in place to support those students' understanding about learning the English language, but learning that within the context of the curriculum here in Potts Grove, so making sure that there's programs in place for that. That's really a very small dollar amount. Any questions about curriculum budget?
I just had a really quick question, and I know that this is, it's Title II, so it's basically budget neutral, we get the money from the federal government, we have to use it. So not to stir a pot on this one. Just out of curiosity, I noticed that we, that there's an additional, almost $50,000 in this, and a good part of it is going toward contracted services. So I was just wondering if there's something in particularly exciting that you have planned for this year to use that? I mean, that's a nice increase in that amount of money, if there's something exciting coming down the road for our teachers.
Sure. Mr. Nestor, and part of that $50,000 are carryover funds, is that correct? So that's really carryover money from the amount that's allocated during, that was allocated during the 2013-14 school year. Is that correct, Mr. Nestor? In addition to those funds, you get funds for this particular school year, and you have to utilize the carryover funds within a certain period of time. Eventually, as is the case for Title I, because you can carryover funds, eventually, those carryover funds go away. So what are some of the ways in which that's supporting our teachers' learning right now? We do have one coach who's working from Heinemann, working with teachers, providing them with ongoing understanding in instructional practices related to balanced literacy. So that's providing in-classroom support to each and every one of our K-5 teachers and providing them with exactly what that instruction looks like on a particular area that the teacher identifies, as long as it's within balanced literacy. So what does that look like for real? It means that the teacher and the coach are sitting down, they're having a conversation about where they currently are in instruction. They're having a conversation about where students currently are as based upon the data that they've collected most recently in February with benchmark assessments. Then it means the coach is then modeling for them what that instructional strategy or what something might look like, what a guided reading lesson might look like. Then the teacher and the coach are coming back together, and they're debriefing upon that conversation, which is where the true professional learning comes out of. In that way, you hear a lot about job-embedded professional development, so it's in the moment, it's provided for students or for teachers, but with the particular students that they're working with at that period of time. One of the criticisms you always hear about staff developments when you're hearing with, when you're working with teachers is, yeah, but do that with our students here, show me what that looks like with our teachers, the beauty, our students, the beauty of this professional development model that shows them in the moment. The other thing that it's supporting is math professional learning at the high school. So again, there's a coach working with our math teachers at both the middle school and the high school over the next several months, providing that one-on-one support in a very similar model, just focused on what that looks like within a math program.
Ms. Galian, in answer to your question as well, when this budget was present, developed, we hadn't embarked on a lot of the things that we're doing this spring. So timing is critical on whether that money is utilized in the current school year or the subsequent school year. So it may well be a case that the $157,000, which is budgeted for '15, '16, some of that, a chunk of that, may well be brought back into this year because now we do have the intensive training going on within our classrooms. So the current year may be larger, the next year may be lower, but ultimately, you're right, it's revenue-neutral because there's a revenue that matches the expenditure in that given year.
Thank you. I had just a couple of comments I wanted to make before we conclude, because I'm sure most people are ready to go home. This is just the first, first step in our process, as you're aware, and I know we shared with you the building budgets the last time, and this time, it was the department budgets. And I just wanted to make the point that our department chairs have done, you know, a very good job of really trying to keep their costs down. In most cases, they're flat, flat budgets, or, you know, only a very slight increase, if any, sometimes in some cases reductions you'll see. So, and this is how we operate the district, I mean, these are large things, but the other things are what's causing our budget to have an increase. So just keep in your mind that our salaries, our retirement, and our charter school tuitions are three biggest inflators, if you, so to speak, in this budget. And so we currently set an $841,000 deficit at 2.4%. What we're doing now, understanding that we have a deficit even at 2.4%, and not knowing for certain where the board wants to come in, is Dave and I and Bill are spending a lot of time scouring through our budget, and when I say we look at the budget, we look at the big-ticket items. We look at personnel, we look at healthcare, we look at anything that's a large ticket item that we can have some, make some impact. One of the things Dave's doing is he met with CPAS, which is the consortium that we belong to for healthcare. They're saying now that we will be getting a reduction. We're not sure exactly how much that reduction is yet, so we're monitoring that, and obviously, we're going to be incorporating those reductions into this budget, so that will help us, you know, reduce our costs somewhat. We're monitoring retirements. Every year, we have retirements. We budget for a certain level of employee, and then when we have a retirement, you can take the difference from, you know, where we're budgeting and what, you know, what that person was costing us, and then we have that, we garner that savings. So as we go through the spring, we're monitoring all of those retirement, retirements as they become official, and then we incorporate that into our budget to reduce our costs. The third thing that we're doing is looking at staff resignations. You know, when employees leave the district, whether that be a groundsman, a custodian, an aide, or a teacher, or an administrator, we take, we take a hard look at, can we do without that position? Is this something that we need to replace? Is there a way to reallocate our resources and do things differently? So that is one of the things that we're reviewing now, coupled with looking at class sizes at the elementary level, obviously, and course enrollments at the high school, and looking at what those course enrollments look like and how many students are enrolling in those courses, and then how can we use staff the most efficiently and effectively? And if we don't have enough enrollments and we have someone leave at the high school, then we say, well, maybe we don't fill that position this year, or we move someone from the middle school to the high school to cover the difference. And those are, those are some of the things that we're, that we're currently looking at. Additionally, we're paying very close attention to the governor's budget. I mean, just today, Dave and I sat through, and a couple other people joined us, a three-hour budget seminar that PASBO put on that reviewed every component of the governor's budget, and looking at what, what they're saying that we're going to get, and talking about whether or not we'll really see that. And I wanted to make the, the point that just, I think it was last week, I received a letter from the Acting Secretary of Education directing superintendents to be prepared to create a spending plan for any allocations that are over the Act I index. So we've been talking about that as a team, and they have to be, this plan that has to be developed has to be earmarked towards certain things, and luckily for us, they're very much earmarked on those things that we deem important, and obviously, the state deems important, like full-day kindergarten, additional instructional time for students beyond the school day, summer learning, professional development, classroom materials, smaller class size at elementary, academic and enrichment programs and courses in encore, STEM-type things, looking at intervention programs, funding higher education opportunities for students in our, in our school system, college and career counseling, alternative opportunities, hybrid and innovative learning. So all of those types of things, we're going to be asked to be putting a plan together, but just so you understand, they have not come forward with any direct instructions on how to go about that. And then in the interim, I received two letters, one from the Speaker Majority Leaders of the House, and one from state Senate representatives, both asking that we demand that they rescind the mandate because they haven't gone through their appropriations process to determine whether or not they're even going to accept the budget. So it was, there's a little bit of tug-and-pull going on, and it's kind of, you know, we're just kind of left in the middle, wondering what's going to happen. So, you know, really, I got out of this, this budget webinar this morning that we participated in, that we should not expect, they're already about a month behind in the budget development process, and so even for us to think we're going to have a budget by June 30th with a new governor, they're already starting out behind, you know, is highly unlikely, and that we need to move forward, you know, not, not assuming that we're going to receive these funds. And then the other thing I wanted to make mention of is that we're negotiating the teachers' contracts, so anything that comes from that will impact this budget, and we have to be cognizant of that as we're careful in monitoring this budget moving forward to ensure that we have the appropriate funding for that. And I guess that's all I wanted to say at this point. I mean, I certainly can take any guidance or feedback that you have, but I wanted you to know that we're, we're on this, we're paying attention to it, and we're, and we'll be coming back to you at future meetings to give you more information. Are there any, any questions, or I think everyone's budgeted out?
A little bit.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but thank you, Shelley, for putting that together and putting everything on the table for us to look at. So with that, we'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay.
All right. Have a good night, everybody. that we adjourn. All right. Have a good night, everybody.